...for select boards meeting. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 15 and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Please join us. I recite the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a seven o'clock scheduled appointment with Plymouth County Commissioner for an offer check presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Greg Hanley, Plymouth County Commissioner, former selectman here in my former hometown. It's good to be back presenting an amazing amount of money. And before I begin, I have to tell you, as a board, we get to review 27 communities in all of their submissions. This submission here is a testament to your community standards. And what I mean by that is there are many pots of money that this money could have gone for. And the best use of money that I've seen so far is revenue replacement. And that means that you are going to be able to restore services to pre-pandemic levels with this amount of money. So there's no limitations on the uses of these monies. And you've got $710,000 that's coming back to the town through the ALBA program. You've done some creative things. Bill has mastered the program in terms of what the eligibility is. But the best and highest use that I've seen personally is to use some money that you're able to use for whatever the community standards are with which you want them to be used for. So it's a testament to the authenticator and the originator. So with that, I have a check to present on behalf of the Plymouth County ALBA program for $710,242.86. And I'll bring you the grant agreement for your review. And that's basically it. And I know the Celtics are on and I know Brady's retiring, so. Short and sweet is the way it is, so.
Do we all hold the little check?
We do. I have been told two pitches.
There's a giant one right there.
One with the big check, one with the little check. And make sure that the pitcher doesn't have the accountant number on it, so my thumb will count.
We need your thumb.
That's it. So with that, thank you. And it's my pleasure to present this to you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
And good luck with it.
Thank you.
I will say, I will be back here on Saturday for the dedication of the community center. Ian and I go way back on that one. And I'm so glad to see success being completed. It's beautiful. And I'm sure it will contribute to the fabric of the community. With that, that's it. If you want to take the pictures, you can all go on.
Thank you, Greg.
Do it.
Who's our picture taker?
Who's our picture taker? I'll take it.
There we go. I love it. Initiative.
We need someone with a phone.
You can take mine.
Can you forward that to us?
Of course.
Come on in, Greg. Great.
Thank you so much.
Now we have to take one with the...
Here, I'll take this.
Where's the account number? You think I know, right? How about this? You take one side, I'll take the other.
We'll hide it equally?
We'll hide it. Yeah, there you go.
That works.
Didn't break the camera, did I?
No.
All right, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
Congratulations. Well, luck with it. By the way, John Brown, I have to... A moment of personal privilege. We voted the budget the other day. And John was there representing the town. And he has been a good steward, keeping us honest down there in the county. And I appreciate the effort of coming to a meeting that isn't always fully attended. So if we don't have a quorum, we don't have a budget. So thank you. Thank you, Greg. I appreciate it.
Guys, my pleasure. Good luck.
Very good.
See you on Saturday.
Phil, please thank him.
That's it, I'm good. Courtesy of the county.
I'll make sure I thank Tom.
John Mason's counting all the paper clips. Don't forget the big check.
Oh, gee, God. Get the other one.
Just leave the small one.
Yeah.
Thanks again.
Have a good night.
You too. All right, moving on. We have a vote for application for new common visualized license, Stephen Waugh of Smoke and Sizzle, 159 Forest Street. Are you Steve?
It's me.
Hi.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice to meet you as well. Do you want to share a little bit about what you're applying for?
So I am looking to open the kitchen at Old Colony Sportsman's Club. Breakfast and lunch, barbecue, small fares. Also do catering and other options. I feel like the choice for food in the area is a little tough. So I have, I think, everything that I need.
Everything, Mr. President.
I have an occupancy permit, a business certificate, Board of Health permit, the lease from the club. And then I have a, just a simple layout of what the kitchen kind of looks like and the hall set up if anybody wants to look at it. Other than that, I don't think I have much else to say, really.
Is anyone on the board have any questions?
Yeah, sure. So in what capacity will you be operating out of the Old Colony?
So I'll be serving members and also it will be accessible to the public.
That's kind of, yeah, that's kind of what we were getting at. So it's not really just for the club?
It's not just for the club. It's for other members of the community as well.
Oh, interesting. Okay, cool.
I'm hoping to do some DoorDash things and stuff like that where I can kind of give more options for food in the area.
I see. So you'll be operating out of that space, but you're fully operating your business out of that space?
Exactly.
People will be able to order from it, come in, et cetera. Are you going to be the only one working there? Will be there someone else to like administer?
Yep, I'm a sole proprietor. I'm the only one. I don't have any partners. So I'm excited but nervous at the same time.
Maximum visibility. You get to see everything. You don't have to worry about anything. It's good stuff.
Do you have a Facebook something so people can see?
I do. I have a Facebook getting... I have a logo right here. You guys can check it out. And then I have, my website is getting built. My Instagram and my Facebook pages are getting put together.
What would they be called?
They'll... I'll be under Smoke and Sizzle.
I have a question. Is the Smoke and Sizzle, is there any kind of play on the fact that it's out of also like the gun range or?
So funny story about that. I did a poll with a bunch of my friends and social media followers. And there was a couple of other names that I was looking to go towards. And I figured if I do expand, it does play on it, but also it gives me space to expand and not have to change my branding.
That's pretty smart, yeah. That's cool.
What hours, days and hours will be open?
Probably the weekend, like eight to one, eight to two. And then Monday nights, I'll be doing the member meetings, which there'll be an opportunity for, again, same thing, like delivery, DoorDash stuff. And I'm looking to expand eventually. So it's a good place to start, I think.
Works out really good for your business and it works out for the Sportsman's Association too, because they rent it out to you.
This is Mary. She's on the board at the Sportsman's Club. She came to support me. So other than that, I don't, like I said, I don't think I have anything.
Nobody has anything else to make of the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the application for common visualized license, CV-86, to Sizzle and Smoke at 159 Forest Street, pending the approval of the building inspector and health agents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If all are in favor?
Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Good luck with everything.
Thank you. Have a good night, guys.
You too.
Go something, that's right.
We're crying. Next up, we have a vote for a bylaw review committee recommendation to appoint Alicia Siciliano Perry to the vacancy. Did you want to speak on that or unnecessary?
She came in, she's met with us a couple of times. She's Chair of the Planning Board and really an asset to the bylaw review committee.
Yeah, I'm excited to have her. Do I have a motion? Any commentary?
I would move to appoint Alicia Siciliano Perry to the General Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Next up, vote social race management request, Winter Lights 5K, on Saturday, December 7th, 4:00 to 6:30. Anne Marie, would you like to speak?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Anne Marie Winchester and I am the owner of a company called South Shore Race Management. We manage charity road races throughout the South Shore, primarily hang them south down to the Cape. We currently are managing 27 races. We've, in the time that we've been in business over the last 15 years, we've managed approximately 400 road racing events. We are only in the road race industry. We don't get into like biking or anything like that. What I'm requesting tonight is permission to hold the Winter Lights Road Race in conjunction with the Town Tree Lighting on Saturday, December 7th. It would take place after the tree lighting, so the race would start at approximately 6:30 PM. And they would, the runners would go Mount Nav, High Street, and then come back up, really reverse direction of what other road races have done, just because of the road width, better visibility, better lighting in those areas to get the runners out and started on the course. The race does take place after dark, so that is a concern. They are all required to wear some form of lighting, whether it be a headlamp, carry a flashlight. It kind of morphed into its own sort of thing where people actually dress up as different holiday characters and are lit up anyways. All of the race parking will be over at the high school and runners will be bussed in, dropped off at the post office. So there won't be any vehicle traffic from the road race. It will just be bringing the runners in and out on the buses.
We've vetted this with the police department as to limit any interference with the tree lighting. And that's why we're going that direction. That's why we're bringing them in on buses. So we think that it'll allow the tree lighting to take effect and that group clear as these folks are starting going in the other direction. So everybody is in support of the plan. We made some adjustments to the plan, but at this point, you're seeing the final plan.
And it is a charity event, so we are working on determining the charitable organization or organizations that will benefit from it.
Pembroke organizations?
They will be Pembroke organizations, yes, absolutely.
How many people would you expect?
Around 1,000.
Wow. So there'll be no parking at the community center at all?
No, they're not parking there. They're parking at the high school.
The runners are going to park at the high school, but what about people attending the road race? Will they be parking at the community center?
No, we'll have the buses available down at the high school. So anybody that's running in the road race or just coming as a spectator, they would need to take the buses. We don't want to have any of them. Don't want to add to traffic when there's so many people on foot around here, just from a safety perspective. It just, it makes more sense to have them be required to take the bus and then not even allow the bus to come all the way into the downtown. You have to drop off at the post office and then they'll have to come the rest of the way on foot. We'd do race day registration and pickup at the community center. So we've already talked to them about utilizing some of the space for that. But there'd be no traffic, I mean, other than race staff.
Bill, any cost to the towns?
No, and actually, as Anne Marie pointed out, there's, we're going to, we'll likely see some decent donations to some charities. We've spoken about some suggestions for her and hopefully we can, we're going to work that out. It's not going to be an issue.
Also, this race used to take place in Plymouth and I've run it probably seven or eight times. And the amount of people that hang around and go to all the restaurants and hang out in the town for the rest of the night is astronomical.
Yeah. It's something, it's one of those events that we want to start to attract people, similar to if anybody saw what happened last Saturday for the farmer's market, unbelievable attendance. You know, we want to start to really emphasize that and bring people into town.
And Plymouth did theirs very similar, where they would do their tree lighting and then the race would start. It was all one event.
Exactly. It was all part of one event.
Yep, people really enjoyed that.
It's less impact on the town to have it all together taking place. Granted, it is a little bit chaotic when you're bringing in an extra 1,000 people, but I think with reducing the traffic by not having anybody come in any other way except for on the buses. The other thing is, is for anybody that's attending the tree lighting, we can also, they're allowed to park at the school and take the buses too. We're not going to be checking to make sure they're race participants or anything. So if anybody doesn't, you know, want to come down here and park, they're welcome to take the buses as well. Financially, I pick up all of the bills for the road race, so there's no financial impact to the town itself. If there's any post race cleanup, we take care of the cost of that as well. But, and yes, we do make significant charitable donations after the race. Depending on how successful it is, it's hard to tell. First year in a new location with the buses, numbers will probably be a little bit lower than they have been in the past. We've had as high as 2,200 runners. Last year, I think we had 1,500. I'm estimating will probably be around 1,000 with the new location.
What attracted you to bring this to Pembroke?
It was definitely time to make some changes to where we're doing races. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Plymouth Harbor. This is, you know, most of our races have historically taken place down there. There are hundreds of new condos. There are thousands of additional cars and every single street is under construction. It makes it very difficult for planning. And with the increase in the automobile traffic in the downtown, it's, in my opinion, from what I've seen and what I've heard from runners, it's causing some safety issues.
Okay, good to know.
And it's good to highlight a new town, too.
It's good to bring, you know, it's good to bring new people into the town to show them what you have. And we can promote anything at all. You know, I'm totally flexible on that. So if you want to promote the new community center, if you want to promote the farmer's market, you want to promote anything else you're doing in town, we can do that all through the road race. I do a monthly email that goes out to 40,000 to 50,000 local runners that have participated, crossed the finish line at one of our races. So we're pretty flexible and have the ability to get to a lot of people to promote other things that are going on. We'll be promoting the tree lighting. We'll be promoting any other activities that are going on during the tree lighting.
So you're already promoting the tree lighting as part of it to kind of help?
We will be doing that, yes.
Not yet.
I'm not doing anything. It lies in your hands, actually. So I'm not doing anything at this point. But I, you know, we have the ability to do that. We're a small company. We don't have different layers of management that we have to go through. I have a small staff.
Would you say it's a benefit to yourselves as well to have other folks coordinate with you to highlight other aspects that are happening around the same time, such as the community center, for example?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. It's a benefit to everybody, really. I mean, we benefit from it. The charity that we select benefits financially, the town benefits by, you know, just the people that normally wouldn't be here. We have people that travel from all over the place. I also think that it'll be easier for people to get here. And it's on a Saturday. Plymouth was always on a Friday, so that will make somewhat of a difference, too. So.
It might make sense to have, to link Lance up.
He's already, Lance is already.
You guys have already?
Yep, we've already mapped Lance as well. And we will also be bringing in, you know, the construction lights that they bring out on the highway. We'll be using those along High Street to provide some lighting for the runners because they're on street.
You said down High Street, up Mount Nav, right?
No.
Down, oh, really?
We're going to go this way.
Oh, it is the opposite.
So you're going to go down that hill and not up it?
That's so much nicer.
Isn't that nicer?
It is much nicer. We've been on that route before.
Yes. So the opposite of what Girls on the Go used to do.
Gotcha. I love it. That's a well-loved race. I feel like that will bring quite a few.
Yeah, you know, it's a...
People would be very upset when they heard that was being canceled.
Yeah.
Not knowing what the future would be.
Right. And, shh, I haven't told anybody.
Oh.
Nobody knows.
Okay.
They'll have an even better location now, so.
They'll tell your running friends, yeah.
Not if we don't get to a vote.
All right, Anne, anxious. Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
The only thing I have to comment, thank you for letting me know that you have floodlights because in our roads of Mount Nav, High, Little's, Allen, it is very dark back there.
Yeah, you know what? These traffic control comes in and brings in those lights.
Perfect.
And we can direct them in any way and make sure that they're not shining in anybody's front windows, too.
Yeah, I just care about the safety of the runners since they're on our property, pretty much.
Yeah, and that is my number one priority. And that is why I say, you know, we do need to make changes every once in a while to different events because when you have people on foot, again, why I'm parking at the school, you have too much foot traffic and it just becomes dangerous and it's just not worth doing it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anne Marie, thank you. Do I have a motion?
I would move to approve the use of the town's roads by South Shore Race Management on Saturday, December 7th, 2024, starting at 4:00 PM on Center Street, Mount Nav, High Street, Barker Street, Allen Street, and Little's Ave, subject to the approval and conditions of the Pembroke Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Next up, we have a vote to implement mandatory volunteer core policy effective July 1st, 2024. I know that we have town... Go ahead.
Nope, finish in there.
I was going to say, I know we have town council coming to our next meeting, so I was going to suggest that we table this until our next meeting.
It's exactly what I was going to suggest. We're, we've asked town council for, it's been a back and forth discussion.
Right.
We've asked town council for an actual best practice document. And she's coming on the 26th, so I was going to recommend that you read through what she sent, but, and we will be sending you the next, probably by Saturday of this week, her other recommendations. Read through that and then bring questions for her on the 26th.
I prefer that.
Motion to table and go to the subsequent meeting when town council is available.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Vote to accept resignation of Jane Ford from the Affordable Housing Committee.
I would move to accept the resignation of Jane Ford from the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
I would move to appoint Fraser Townley to the Affordable Housing Committee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Discussion, possible vote to update board liaison roles. So we want to just open this up to anybody who hasn't. First of all, I spoke with Becky on the Old Colony Planning Council and as far as I am aware, she is just fine to remain.
She doesn't miss a meeting. I'm usually there. She's there.
Do we have any need to even address that? Does anybody have any need to?
Do we need to make a motion to keep her on there?
Well, I just was curious if anybody else...
Yeah, we do. We do. I will say that while she's not a selectman any longer, you do not have to be a selectman.
Right.
It's this board's purview to appoint somebody and she does well at the task.
And I did speak to her and she said she was there for at least another year. So, all right, then I think that one's nice and easy, so maybe we should make a motion on her.
I would move to keep Rebecca Coletta as our regional state representative for Old Colony Planning Council.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Do we want to just go down the list here that we have and see who would like to continue with what? I'm the school committee liaison. I would prefer to keep that unless anybody has any desire to take that one. John is council on aging.
Yep, I'd like to see yours. So it's all good.
Do we want to just leave that be?
Yes, please.
Rich, DPW Water Commissioners?
Sure, I'll stay.
Okay. What about Community Center Task Force? Is that...
Can we just take no action on that this evening and then disband it after the community center opens?
That's right. We did talk about that. Okay. Advisory Committee, John.
I'm like de facto, so I mean, I haven't been able to make meetings, so I...
I would actually like to then, if you have been able to, and I would like to take that one on if I can.
Thank you, Steve. No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Why don't we go through them all and then we'll go back and vote. Safety Committee, Pimmer, is also me. I don't have any strong feelings either way. It really hasn't been an active, but I'm happy to stay if nobody else wants that. Planning Board, Zoning Board, Land Use, Steve.
I'd like to keep that, if everyone's okay.
Affordable Housing Committee is also you.
Yep, I'll stay on that.
I realize that. And then moving down to the select board initiatives, we have the Joint Board of Selectmen or Select Boards School Committee Revenue Subcommittee. I would like to actually leave that one. I think this one started off pretty bumpy. I think it could be better moving forward, but I do feel like maybe we should start with new population.
I'd be interested in that.
I would prefer not to be on it unless I need to fill a spot.
I would like to jump on it, if everyone else is okay, unless...
I'd like to be on that committee as well.
Do you have thoughts?
Fresh perspective either way, if they want to be on the budget subcommittee, it's fun by me.
Yeah.
Okay, so...
So we're going to be making that Steve and Rich. And then Shared Water Resources Working Group is Steve and Rich. That hasn't even done it.
It's not even really a thing. We haven't really done anything with that one. I don't know if we'll...
Yeah, with the new Plymouth County initiatives, I'm not sure it's going to fit.
Do we want to disband that?
I'm fine with disbanding it.
Does anybody have any thoughts on this?
You are at this time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it makes sense.
All right. And then the only other one that's missing is VOTEC and I'm the liaison for that and I would like to stay on that if possible. If anybody has any. Okay. All right. All right, so do we need to vote these individually?
You can vote them as, well, you can vote them as a slate as long as you identify the changes.
Yeah, if you, if you just read, read this whole thing out loud and ask for a vote as a slate.
All right, so it would be School Committee, Tracy Marino, Council on Aging Board, John Brown. DPW Water Commissioners, Rich Flynn. We're going to not acknowledge Community Center Advisory Committee, Steve Ceciotti. Safety Committee, Pimmer, Tracy Marino, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Land U, Steve Ceciotti, and Affordable Housing Committee, Steve Ceciotti. So do we have a motion? I'm just going to do those one separate from the initiative.
Most to accept the slate.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then for our select board initiatives, we are going to change joint select board, sorry? Select Board School Committee Revenue Subcommittee to Steve Ceciotti and Rich Flynn. And we are going to.
Disband.
Disband the Shared Water Resource Working Group. And so should VOTEC. Guess it's an initiative. It will remain me. Tracy Marino.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Moving on, a vote to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2024.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Perfect. Town manager's report.
So I have a few things. Holiday closings coming up. We will be closed on next Wednesday, June 19th, for federal holiday. We will also close on July 4th and remain closed on the 5th. We have limited staff. Staff has an option to take a vacation day, make up the time or work that day. And reopen again on Monday, the following Monday. So Community Center grand opening Sunday, excuse me, Saturday, June 15th, from 10:00 to 1:00. The formal ceremony will be about 35 minutes, beginning at 10:00, several speakers. And then there'll be tours throughout the building all day. We're going to have some food trucks available. I would encourage everybody to come out and, and, and check it out. I mean, it is a tremendous facility, so.
Jim Floor, how's it doing?
It's doing.
Will it be, will it be done by?
I cannot guarantee it. The American Floors has been there every day. They stripped and redid the floor. And it's been down for over a week now. When I was there today, it's still a little bit tacky. It is drying in certain areas, but it was still tacky in other areas, so.
So it's getting there. There's end in sight. It just might, it may need a little bit more time.
So we will determine that on Saturday, actually Friday night with American Floors. The upper section of the gym will be wide open, so you can walk the upstairs track. You'll be able to see the entire gym below you. You just won't be able to walk on, potentially walk on the gym floor. Moving on, we had the discussion where I was, well, I'll just use the word irritated with MastDOT on the Route 36 project. They have met with the general contractor and they have worked out a plan. We will be meeting with them next week where the town will have final input on that plan. If I'm not happy on the 26th, you'll be hearing from me again. Hopefully you're not hearing from me about it because that means everything is good and the road will be up to the standards that the town has set, so. One, to acknowledge via town policy that I issued a temporary trailer permit for 40 Milford Drive because they had a major water incident there and water damaged the building. The building's uninhabitable, so they will have a temporary trailer there while they repair the home, so.
Question?
Yes.
Will you or the building department keep an, keep an eye on the use of that, the length of time? We've, in the past, bills, it's been a long time now, but we've had temporary trailers that have been there for five years or more.
So we, we reviewed their five years.
Yeah, there was a, it was a problem.
We reviewed their building permits, the building inspector reviews that, we review the permitting time to make sure that that is reasonable and then we'll give them a 30-day leeway. But at that point, we'll tell them that, hey, you know, temporary is temporary, so.
Yeah, and there were extenuating circumstances in the one that I mentioned, so hopefully it was a one-off.
So, so we definitely do monitor that. Building Inspector's been great about that. We haven't had, this is, no, we haven't had that many, but. Lydia Drake Library, this is their 80th anniversary. I don't know if people are aware, we do have two libraries in town. We have our main Pembroke Public Library. We also have the Lydia Drake Library. They are having an open house on June 23rd from 10:00 to 2:00 PM in celebration of their 80th anniversary. Want to, a couple of public service messages. We have an issue with waterfowl. Several residents are feeding the waterfowl. Don't do that. It's not good for the birds. And it's certainly not good for, for them and, and the town facilities. As you know, we test our lake. If you're feeding them, it increases the bacteria content in the lake because food that you would be feeding them isn't natural food that they would be eating. And it could potentially make our lakes untwumable or unusable as a result of that bacteria. So not good for them, not good for us, and not good for recreational use, so please don't feed the waterfowl. If you want some more information, there is more additional information on our website regarding that. And the final thing for residents, I've heard from, from members of the board and potentially one other person that there have been door-to-door solicitors in town that are unlicensed. So if a door-to-door solicitor comes to your door and they're not licensed, that license means they're approved by this board. They have a background check or quarry and the police issue them an ID, please call the police. That, that is a finable event. They're not allowed to do that in the town of Pembroke. And if you want, after you call the police, follow up with me so we can just note it and double check to make sure that they're not licensed. But we know for a fact that we've had residents and board members tell us that people aren't licensed, so not good.
Court of justice, police.
So we do maintain a list and so does the police department.
Maybe for someone to have access to that.
Yep, good idea, so.
So if someone approaches your house, asks them for ID and a license.
Yep.
To actually do door-to-door solicitation.
Correct.
Very simple. And if they cannot produce, call the police.
Exactly.
Because they're violating the town.
Yep. That, that's all I had this evening on the town manager's report.
Can you provide a description of what the license looks like?
Uh, yeah, I can probably get a copy.
Does it have a town seal?
I don't know.
Can you, to that point, can you maybe post maybe a blanked-out version on social media so people can see and then they can share it, select board members can share it so people can see what that license is supposed to look like?
Maybe on the website as well.
Yeah.
So it's permanent. Right. Nice and easy. Yeah, that's true.
Oh, yeah.
Anything else?
That's all I had this evening.
Nothing. Thank you. Do we have any other updates?
I only have the, the one that the annual advisory board meeting happened on June 6th.
Plymouth County.
Plymouth County. They did pass their budget, a little over $11 million. Due to other populations within the county gaining more people, our 3.8% went to 3.34% of the county itself, but we're still being represented quite well overall. Mark Townsend was named chair of the Plymouth County Advisory Board. And Dick Quintle was voted on in from Plymouth to be part of the executive board also, but that's about it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any older, new business? Announcements? I feel like we've covered most of them. You saw it. Okay. Any community comment from anybody on the board? Anybody here? All right, well, upcoming issues, all we have listed is June 26th. We're going to vote our annual reappointments. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. 34 minutes, I'm sorry.